Hello and welcome to another in our edition of Journal Star Editorial Board Podcasts with at-large city council candidates ahead of the February 26th primary election. With us today is sitting city council member Zach Euler.
Good morning, thanks for having me and look forward to our chat today.
Thank you. I'm Journal Star Associate Editor Chris Kergard. With me is Executive Editor Dennis Anderson.
Hello, everybody.
And running our sound today is Assistant Managing Editor Adam Garrick, also a member of the editorial board. All right, Zach, let's jump in with this. You've been on the city council for the last two years. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why the heck you want to keep this job after two years doing it?
No shortage of challenges, but I definitely enjoy the work. Two years in here, we've had obviously the budget challenges and a lot of economic change that's happened over the last couple of years. Currently in real estate in Peoria, renovate older houses as well as sell. And I have a close pulse, I feel, on what's happening in the neighborhoods and what's happening in our economic climate with people moving in and potentially moving out and the things that cause that. Really challenged by the attitude that we should raise taxes and fees every time that we are looking for money rather than digging in and really getting to the root cause of problems. And that's my background and forte is the numbers and efficiency and how do we take it to the next level? And hopefully in the next four years, if I'm re-elected, we'll continue to push and do more of those things as I've been talking about on the council floor, especially the last several months.
What are you hearing from people in the neighborhoods, whether it's about what City Hall should be doing or inefficiencies that they see? And where are the neighborhoods that you're hearing it from?
Paramount is frustration with cost, and that's affecting people all over the city. It doesn't matter whether you're in the 5th district or the 1st district. The fact that we've added two more fees on in the last year, the parcel pension fee and the stormwater fee, as well as having high property and sales tax, it's becoming difficult for people to justify affordability here. And as a real estate agent, I'm showing houses and we're talking about, you know, getting a loan and moving into a community and they're comparing $100,000 in one city to 100 in another, and it's not the same comparison because you have more fees here that have to be taken into consideration. And I've had business leaders as well tell me, you know, enough's enough. I've got $50,000 stormwater fee that I now have to pay and I've got parcel pension fee that could be in excess of $10,000 and I can't justify to be here when I can do it cheaper somewhere else.
There's a lease, I live in a pretty new block. It's about seven years old. And I've seen four or five people who have left to go across the river. And I'd ask each one of those, why are you leaving? And they said, taxes. I can't afford the taxes here. What do you say to those four or five families about why you should come back? Why you should come back to Peoria?
It becomes a very challenging conversation whether you're in the real estate business or not. And obviously, the objective is to have homeownership in our community and it's the discussion of pride and creating some hope that we're going to turn things around. That, you know, every community goes through ups and downs and challenges and we've experienced it over the years with, like Caterpillar especially, you know, they'll go through a down cycle and there's cuts, but people for a long time knew that, well, I'll get a call to come back and so we've just got to get through the challenge here, the trough, and then be back to the office and the economy will get better. And that's really the story here is that we have to be able to go out and pitch a plan. And that's my continued emphasis and focus is that we've got to have a plan and communicate optimistic days ahead rather than this challenge that people are running from.
Now, you were one of the votes that was against the parcel pension fee. And I want to ask you now what it was that you would have done instead to get that money and what you would do instead in the future to get what amounts to $80 million in increased pension costs over the next 10 years that we've got to pay? Where does that money come from?
There's a couple of different efforts that really need to be taken underway to address that. On the cost side, we have to cut. It's just the nature of reality. You have services that you can't afford. Our economy is contracting. We're losing people. We're losing business, but we can't just maintain the same level of cost and service the way that it's going. And we've talked on the council floor a lot about the Fitch study that was solicited to look at public service and how do we get more efficient?
Which we still haven't seen yet.
We still have not seen that yet, which is extremely frustrating. I expected that that would happen during the budget session in 2018 and we haven't seen the complete results of that yet, just preliminary findings. But even in the preliminary discussion, the expression is that there's opportunities there. I've seen opportunities myself going around and looking at how we do things. We have to get more efficient and deliver a service at a lower cost. The other half of that is we've got to get louder and louder with Springfield to give relief on the pension problem. I've worked with the Realtors Association locally to form a group that's working to dig into how do we have an impact with the state legislature and get our local association to work with the other associations so that they can really bang on Springfield's door and say, hey, you're killing our community because that's exactly what's happening. We need to get the chambers and the other business groups in the state to band together and say, this has to change. It has to stop because we can't survive this.
And yet, there's been no movement from the legislature on that for the years that it's been advocated. So, you know, can we really depend on that? I would say that in the near term, we certainly can't. So where do you find those efficiencies? What's on the chopping block for you?
We have to get further and further into everything that we're doing. One of the things that I brought up on the council floor that was met with some opposition was, you know, we're going out from the fire department standpoint on close to 20,000 calls a year. Less than 1,000 of those are fires. And so is it really the right use of resources to have half million dollar fire equipment going on all of these calls? Or is there a better way that we could be utilizing service and sending people out in a different type of vehicle? You know, there's a big cost difference between a, you know, $75,000, we'll say, on the high-end suburban versus a $500,000 piece of fire equipment, which at the end of its useful life is worth $3,500 in scrap value.
Should a full engine company be going out on one of those emergency calls?
And that's the conversation that we have to have is what's the right number to have there? And that's what the study should be providing us the answers to is what's the right number of people? How do we better utilize our resources so that we can make some educated, well-informed decisions on where to go from here next? Because that's how we're going to have to do it. The times are changing, the costs are changing, and we have to be able to get leaner and better at how we're delivering service.
Shouldn't some other city have already made that kind of study? Already have the results? Why do we have to go out and do another several thousand dollar study?
Well, I think even if you look at communities that are doing similar things, we all have different attributes that we have to go out and assess and analyze. And when you get into the details of who's dispatching our calls, what they're dispatching, how do we determine what best practices are? And I think we really have to be looking to and listening to some professionals in that space because I know as the council, we're not experts in this space. We have to rely on others to help us make some of these decisions.
Zach, I want to ask you too, you favored in your questionnaire the idea of using grant dollars more strategically for block-by-block rehabilitation in some of the areas of the community that are in much more need of that. What does that look like and where should that begin? Because there's a lot of areas in need from the south end through the east bluff into the north valley. How do you pick who's worst off or most likely to succeed?
This is a subject I'm a little bit passionate about, obviously with my line of work and the things that I do. But also, I live in a heritage neighborhood and so I think that, you know, I'm very in tune with this topic. And you look at different areas of town and the things that we're doing and you've got a facade improvement project on a building in this neighborhood. You've got a new house being built in that neighborhood. And I think that there's resources being put into each neighborhood, which shouldn't change. It's how we go about doing it. And we need a plan for each of these neighborhoods to determine, you know, if we're going to put dollars into having a habitat house, for example, built on this street, what are the other infrastructure changes that we should be making here? Because it's not effective when you're putting a street light in 10 blocks away, but you're putting a new house in on this street. And if we can make transition one block at a time, you can actually start to see an impact. But when we're doing the scattered housing and we're doing scattered investment, you don't see the change. And so it doesn't have the same impact when you go into a neighborhood and think, wow, we're really making a difference here. Just the little droppings scattered all over the place doesn't have the same impact.
What about the business development component that goes with that? You talk about some anchors in neighborhoods with smaller businesses that can go in as part of that growth. How do you find those and identify somebody willing to come in to what amounts to a transitional neighborhood? What aren't we doing there?
Especially as you go into the older neighborhoods, you see that you've got anchor old businesses. Many of them are vacant, sitting on corners because that's where the people walk to work. These neighborhoods were founded back at a time where no or few people had automobiles so they were walking to their place of business and you had the corner grocery store. And all of your resources were right there locally. Well, as the neighborhoods have declined, those businesses have moved out. And really, no focus has been put on what does this mean to the neighborhood and how do we fix it? And that all has to go into this plan of how do we make this neighborhood look differently? How do we bring a job back to an area? And in my opinion, the city has been on the backside of these discussions and we come up with a grant program or TIF money and it sits in a pot until someone calls us up and say, hey, I've got a project idea. Whereas if we had a plan focused on each of these neighborhoods and got on the front end of it and started looking and saying, hey, there's a business here and there's an opportunity and we as a community can help market these opportunities. I had someone call me yesterday that I've met just from being on the council and they know that I'm in real estate and said, hey, I was driving down West Main Street towards Bradley and I saw this building that looked like it might have an opportunity to rent a space and I'm looking to move my business. Do you have any idea anything about it or who owns it? And so I looked it up and said, oh yeah, I know the owner. I can put you in contact with it. The sign's been gone for a long time, but just something that somebody had in the back of their mind. And, you know, when people are talking about things and making it a priority, you can start to put pieces together.
Whose job is it to come up with that plan you talk about?
I think it has to be a priority of the council, first of all. Obviously, working with our community development and economic development staff. But the council has to focus on this as a priority and an expectation for our departments that this is where we want to go. And we're sitting very complacent in this area. And I've really pushed on us as a council, and especially in the budget discussions, that we need an economic development business plan. No business survives without a business plan. So what would make us think we're any different that we're just going to live off of these one or two-year budgets and not really focus on where we're going? And that's on us to push for and to start talking about, which we have the first of these discussions this Saturday. We're having a policy session focused on economic development.
What's been your message to the city council on, hey, we got to stop dragging our feet? What are you telling them? Why aren't they listening?
We can't afford to live this way anymore. You can see the writing on the wall. We're headed with $80 million pension obligation we can't pay for, budgets that are blown year after year, completely depleting the savings account. It doesn't get any more clear where things are going. We have to do something different.
You can see the writing on the wall on a lot of things. The city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a study two-plus years ago through the National Resource Network, dealing with some of the same issues that we've seen in this 24/7 Wall Street report on challenges African Americans face in Peoria. And it's underemployment, unemployment, higher incarceration rates, lower educational attainment rates, the property vacancies and declining property values in South Peoria in particular. And after those hundreds of thousands of dollars that were spent and a general agreement, hey, the city needs to find partners and come up with some action plans, we're still at step zero on that. Nothing has been done. Where's the city falling short on that? And who wears the jacket for that?
It's a leadership issue that starts with the council. It starts at the top and it has to come from us. We have to push for the direction. Shortly after I got elected, in a strategic planning session, and as I mentioned in one of my questionnaire comments, it focuses on the nice-to-haves rather than where are we going and what are we going to do? We all know that we want this to be a beautiful city. We all know that we want things to be cleaned up, but we've got to roll our sleeves up, sit down and start doing some of the work ourselves. And this is only going to happen through getting together and making it a priority as a discussion. We go into these council meetings and essentially, in my opinion, we're voting up or down or arguing around whatever the issue is on the floor for the night, whatever is brought to us. We need to start bringing the conversation to the floor. We need to demand that we have these conversations and make it a priority for ourselves. That's the only way that this is going to go anywhere. We're not just going to sit idly by and see the problem resolve itself at this point.
So as somebody who still pays Peoria real estate taxes and pays sales taxes in the city of Peoria, I'm going to put you on the spot on what, if you're re-elected, what you are going to commit to do to see that there's finally some action on that study and city action off of it?
Well, and as I started to allude to, we've already begun that process. I made that a priority in the budget, that this had to happen. In last year's budget discussion, we were talking about, we don't have the resources to do what we need to do and changes have to be made. But another year goes by and it hasn't been enough of a priority amongst the group. And I demanded during our budget this year that we need to start having a policy session on economic development and plan going forward. And that's happening this week. I've gone around and met with the heads of different organizations that feed into this, like the EDC and the DDC and the chamber, and discussed what are some of their barriers and how do we start to make a difference here? And what I've asked for as part of this process is for them to give us each one of their top five things that they feel that the council could do differently to make it easier to do their job. The top five barriers that they're having in general to having effective results. And then what are they doing to work amongst each other to try and change this tide and bring a different message? As we've discussed this over time, we've got all these different groups that are working on pieces in our community. And not to say that they're not doing their job or not doing them effectively, but we're not all on the same bandwagon here. And we need to be outselling the same story and working together to do that. If somebody, just like I said, if somebody comes up to me and says, what's our plan? I don't know what that plan is. We need to craft a plan, working together, and this is the only way it's going to happen. And we're finally getting to a point, I believe, where that's going to meet the road.
Peoria is coming off a year where we had a record-tying number of homicides in the city. What more should our police department be doing to deal with that? One of your fellow council members who's retiring has suggested that they should adopt stop-and-frisk tactics. Is that something that you would support?
I don't think that that's resolving our homicide issue. A lot of the homicide issue has been one-off, drug-related types of issues. And pulling cars over and having more officers on every corner isn't how we're going to fix this problem. We need to start at the beginning. Some of the things that we have started doing that I think we need to put more attention and effort into is resident officer program and having officers that are actually engaged with the people in the neighborhood. It comes with having a relationship. And one of the things with last night's council meeting, we did a proclamation for the Peoria Playhouse Children's Museum. And part of their exhibit is helping kids look to what they want to be when they grow up. And having a role model that's the neighborhood officer in your community, I think, is an important part of that, especially as contracts have allowed for our officers to move out of the city. And I've brought this up time and time again on the council floor, that this is really to our detriment. It is hurting our community that not all of our officers live here. Just in showing houses, you know, taking someone around town and said, I like that house. I see there's a police officer's car in the driveway a couple doors down. It makes a difference. It makes people feel safe. It makes them feel like this is a neighborhood where people live and want to be. And we're losing that to other communities. That benefit is being given somewhere else and we're paying for it.
Since that can't arbitrarily just be thrown into a contract, is that the sort of thing where you would support the city incentivizing officers or firefighters to live in the city?
I think we're going to have to. I think that if it's enough of a priority of the council, it's a priority of mine, we're going to have to make it beneficial to do it. Because I think that that's how we are going to start getting some traction on this. You have to have officers living in your neighborhoods. And all of these things are little pieces of the puzzle that has caused the decline of the neighborhoods. As we've lost our public safety employees living in neighborhoods and we've lost the businesses that are the anchors of the neighborhood, we've lost homeownership in the neighborhood and they become rentals. And all of these things just continue to impact an area and then everybody looks at themselves, how do we bring it back? What do we do now?
Southside has several vacant homes. What would you do with those? If money wasn't an issue, what's the future for those homes?
I think in a lot of cases, many of them need to be taken down, especially because of the location that they're in. Even, and that's one of the things I've been really disappointed about since I've been on the council, is seeing what's happened to certain areas. And a landlord comes in and invests money in a house because they can generate a return. But when you're looking at a house that may be worth a few thousand dollars, you're not going to put $10,000 worth of windows in it. And so they only become of value to the people that can generate an income off of it. And then once that's done, they get turned back over to the city to demolish. And it's a very upsetting and frustrating process that I've watched unfold here. Because once it gets to a point where, and I'm a landlord myself, I work with a lot of really great landlords, but there's some out there that don't have the same community-minded focus that others of us have. And they suck the blood out of the turnip and then let the house go. And it becomes the city's problem because there's no more money there. They don't want to pay the fines and fees on the house. It's not worth anything at this point. And so the city ends up having to take possession and either let it sit there or demolish it. And that needs to become part of our strategy is to, how do we deal with this? And we've got to get the blight out of the neighborhood first. And some of that is going to be taking these places down. Some of it might be working with some of our trades to put together programs to have people come in and rehabilitate them. And I think that that would be a really great asset to our community if we could work with our trades and give them a right there training ground to have house renovation projects in our community that can turn something into a neighborhood asset.
You've pointed out several issues that are concerning to you about the city. What is your opinion of the job that Patrick Eric is doing as city manager?
I think that we all have opportunities to improve and that comes at the direction of the council as well. It comes with our expectation and our level of holding the manager accountable and setting goals and setting a direction. And if we're not going to hold the manager accountable, we can't expect a different result. The community is not going to go a different direction based on one singular person. It's the responsibility of all of us to do that.
You're running for an at-large council position and that means asking for votes from all around the city. Talk about how much time you're spending in the various council districts.
That's my favorite part of the job is actually being out, interacting with people in the districts. And it doesn't matter whether you're in the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, or 5th district. I have enjoyed delivering neighborhood proclamations in the 1st district and attending business gatherings in the 5th district. I spend a lot of time on programs in the 3rd. I live in the 2nd. And going to neighborhood associations and coffee chats in the 4th. It's an important part of the job is to have relationships. And I think most people would say, as they've interacted with me, that I will be responsive regardless of where they live and work closely with their district council member to try and resolve issues. I've never been one to pitch something back and say, you need to call your district person. Let's work together and get them engaged and figure out how we fix a problem.
Voters have a choice to make on the 26th of February. Why you instead of any one of the 14 other people?
Well, what I can tell you is what I bring to the table is the dedication and the drive to move forward and move in a different and positive direction. We need a plan and that's what I've been pushing for, is a vision and a direction for this community. And I take the accountability for that. I think that we all need to take the accountability for that. And I have shown that in my track record on the council when we're discussing issues related to raising fees. I ask, what's the impact going to be on our citizens? And I don't support raising fees to avoid making some of the tough decisions that we have to make. And at the same time, I also am actively engaged in, where do we go from here? What does this mean? And how do we bring our key stakeholders into the community? And that's one of the things I feel that we've lost over time. You look back to some of the projects in history, you've had business leadership involvement helping champion the city's vision. And I think a lot of that has been lost and we need to all be working together. Some of the recent attacks of my real estate colleagues from council members and the attacks on the Chamber of Commerce's involvement in our budget discussions have really been disheartening to watch unfold because these are the exact people that we need to be engaging in the process to talk about where we go from here and what's next. And how do we all work together to do that? It's a lot more than just pushing a button Tuesday night. And it's a lot more than a one-man show. This is all of us working together to try and create a path forward. And it's not easy. It doesn't happen overnight. And we certainly have a lot of challenges hanging over our head with the issues created by the state of Illinois. And we've got to work together to change that. And I'm certainly committed and you'll find actively involved in doing exactly that.
I want to ask you one more thing before we go and then, I don't know if Dennis has anything else to toss at you too. You've been on the council two years and hindsight is always 20/20. Is there anything you can think of in those two years that you regret having voted the way you did on or pushed for or anything like that? Anything that you would change that you've done?
I'm not happy with how the whole stormwater program has rolled out. I felt during the budget, a couple pieces to that. Let me start with, the stormwater and the issues with the EPA and the mandate have been brewing for decades. And it would not be as bad and as ugly as it is now if some actions had been taken by councils years ago to start putting the money away, to start, whether it be creating a fee similar to this or doing it through the normal tax levy. But knowing this is coming, there should have been some forethought and planning to get there. And so I certainly advocated that it's time to grow up and start addressing that problem regardless of whether or not you're up for election.
So what would you have done differently?
What we did wrong was I don't feel like we were fully prepared for what we undertook and how we did it. Doing it based on the amount of rainwater and impervious structure on your property has opened up all kinds of Pandora's Box with residents and whether my property qualifies for this exemption or that exemption. And I had permeable pavers put in, how do I get the bill right? We've just had one problem after another with how this is We just had one problem after another with how this has rolled out that we weren't prepared to manage. And we voted during the budget to implement this utility and start this program when not all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. And we still are at a point that we're not there, and we should have stopped and fixed before we went forward with implementing the program.
Who could have done that? Stopped it to get it right?
The council needed to put the brakes on it and say, we're not going to pass this in a budget unless we're comfortable with where we're at. And we passed the stormwater fee, knowing that more of the details were going to come out the following spring. The program wasn't completely ready for prime time yet, and in my opinion, we're a year later and still not there.
We've talked a lot of negative things in our conversation here. What should Peorians be most proud of about the city?
We have a great sense of community pride and a great location, and people that really want to see this community succeed. And you're always going to have the naysayers and the people that choose to move. But I live here, I love it here, I chose to move here. I've been here 17 years now. And our location is ripe with opportunity, with our proximity to river. We've got a great airport and right in the center of the country and the center of the state. And we should be able to put ourselves in a position that starts turning us in a positive direction. But we've all got to band together to really make that happen. But there's a lot of potential here.
All right. Zach Euler, at-large candidate for city council. Thank you for coming in, and good luck to you.
Thanks for having me.